Educating, Informing, Serving. TVE, Keeping Government Honest.
Bellas Falls Reorganization Meeting in order, Monday, March 9, 6:30. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Depending on the length of this meeting, we have a brief executive session to talk about business office personnel.
I remember 12.
Okay, anything else? This is communication and public comment. I don't see anyone from the public here. Moving right along. Reorganization of the Board. First up is the election of a Chairperson. Do I have any nominations? Mr. Breyer.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Molly Bannock for the position of Chair.
Second nomination.
Any others? I have a second for Molly. Any other nominations for Chair?
Mr. Superintendent, I move nominations be closed and ask you to cast one ballot for Molly Bannock as Chair.
Okay, electing Chair will submit one ballot.
Probably have a second and a vote.
Yeah, I believe you have to for that.
You have a second?
So I'll second that.
All in favor of electing Molly Bannock as Chair of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Molly, the floor is yours.
I will, I have a voice that can speak up.
Can you hear us, Priscilla?
Yes.
Okay. We need an election of a Vice Chairperson.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'll put in a motion to have Deborah Wright as Vice Chair.
I will second that motion.
Any others?
Well, once again, I would like to move nominations be closed and direct the Chair to cast one ballot for Deb Wright as Vice Chair.
And I will second that.
All those in favor of Deb Wright for Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
The next election is for Clerk.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for Priscilla Lambert to be the Clerk.
Molly, I'd like to continue as Clerk if that's okay.
Okay, Deb has just, Deb has just made that nomination.
You can second your nomination.
Would you like to second that?
No.
No? I'll second it.
No, we got a second. And I believe David is going to tell me to close it.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor of Priscilla Lambert as Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
You are the Clerk.
Thank you.
Now we need an Assistant Treasurer.
Can I inquire who was the current Assistant Treasurer?
Currently, it's Jack.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we have Mr. Breyer continue his candidacy as Treasurer. As I get a signed check. Or Assistant, excuse me.
Second.
Close nominations.
He's got his part down.
Clerk, cast one ballot for Jack Breyer as Assistant Treasurer.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor with a second to have Jack Breyer be the Treasurer and for the Clerk to cast one vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Appoint voting members of the SU Board.
Who are the current members? David, Deb, and Brenda.
I would be certainly willing to continue. It's an interesting time.
Priscilla, do you want to be on the SU Board?
Um, I was for Rockingham last year and I, I think I probably can be for Rockingham, so, um, if you have three, that's fine. If not, yes, I would do it, but.
I'm willing to continue.
Deb and David.
Okay.
There's only a third.
We have Deb and David right now.
I show up at the meetings anyway.
Yeah, and I don't.
Well, Brenda was a third, but.
That's right, she was.
Brenda's, I guess after a couple weeks.
Somebody else from the Rockingham Board could possibly do it, but it's, you know, if you have three, that's fine.
I think we have Deb, so.
I'd be willing to do it.
If we're under discussion, unless there's someone else at the table with a burning desire, I would see no reason not to reappoint Brenda and we certainly can sub as necessary.
I support that.
What days are the meetings usually?
Wednesdays. I mean, if anybody's burning to do it, I can drop off, you know, just one less board meeting for me, same. Although I'm perfectly willing to do it.
Do we need a motion to appoint or?
I think it's a Chair's prerogative to appoint.
So we have, we have three right now, David, Deb, and Brenda, and several of us here that will alternate when we need to. I mean, I show up the most, some, Jack's at most of them. Do we have to appoint that before the meeting?
It's helpful.
I mean, that's the only thing, is we don't know if somebody's not coming.
Right.
I mean, Brenda's not going to be at meetings for a while, I believe.
Next month.
Next month? Oh, good.
So you could, you could appoint a temporary for Brenda for the reorganization.
Fill in at that meeting, yeah.
So I will fill in whenever Brenda can. Just communicate with me and I'll come. So Priscilla, you're more than welcome to come, but we took you off the hook on that voting.
Okay, that sounds great.
And if there's enough notice in advance, I can fill in too.
And I will attend, definitely, but, um, I was on as, as a Rockingham representative from the Rockingham Board last year.
Okay.
And I had told them that I would like to continue, so we'll see what happens there.
Okay. All right, so we have our SU Voting Board members, David, Deb, and Brenda, and now we need to appoint a truant officer. Mr. Pratt?
Currently, it's Bellas Falls Police Department.
I'll move that motion that we continue with the Bellas Falls Police Department as the truant officer for Bellas Falls Union High School.
Second. There's a motion made and seconded to have the Bellas Falls Police Station, uh, Bellas Falls Police be our truant officer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Appoint representatives to the Technical Center Advisory Councils.
Currently, we have David for RBTC and Margot for WRC.
I'm willing to continue, and David is too, he's nodding his head.
Yes, it gives me an inside line on what's happening up there. And I, I realize this is not directly germane, but I want to just make a point that Chris Pratt has attended more meetings as a Superintendent from Wyndham, Far East than the rest of the Superintendents combined, so we have really good support up there.
Thank you, David.
They noticed Chris.
So do we need to vote on that appointment?
I think it's an appointment.
Yeah, so you're, you're the.
I'm happy to continue.
River Valley Tech and Margot's going to be the, what is Wyndham?
Regional Career Center.
Regional Career Center.
In case you've been keeping track, they had a RAB meeting scheduled that got canceled.
Oh.
It was supposed to be for tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, it got canceled?
Yep.
Good thing.
Okay, appoint warrant signers.
I would like to offer a motion. And the motion is to direct the Chair to, um, uh, let me rephrase that. My motion is to, um, have any two members of this Board sign on behalf of the Board and to have the Chair make those appointments.
Okay. You made a motion, so.
Motion, second.
So there's a motion on the floor to have the Chair.
David Clark moved that any two members of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board may sign on behalf of the Board and that the Board Chair make those appointments.
Perfect. Any discussion? Is anybody that would like to do that, wants to be on that call list?
Currently, it's Deb Wright and Jack Breyer.
Is that legal or are we required to vote on somebody?
Well, that's a wonderful question. I don't know.
A wonderful question. I believe it's only asked wonderful questions.
I would like to respond to my distinguished colleague from Athens, and I think that there's, Stephen is suggesting that perhaps the designee should be voted on, and my response to him is that an abundance of caution says, why not do it?
Why not do it what?
Well, in other words.
Vote on it.
Reflect the popular will.
Well, isn't that the difference from the motion you made? The motion is for the Chair to appoint.
I don't think we're all taking this very seriously.
My, my motion was to, uh, direct the Chair to appoint any two members to sign on behalf of the Board.
So if you guys are both gone, we can appoint two other people that week.
And Steve Fine is raising the question of whether they need to be voted on. I don't have an answer, and if Steve Fine can craft a motion that would cover it, I'd be happy to withdraw mine. I guess he's not going to.
Okay. He's thinking.
We're getting feedback through the phone here, so. Looks like you found it.
So who are the current two?
The current two are Deb and Jack, and are you two still able to do that?
It does say appoint on the, on the agenda. It says appoint.
It does.
I, I would just say that whether appointed or elected, I, I have been doing it for a while. I think it's important, to the extent that the Treasury thing is anything more than symbolic, it's one of the things that I pay attention to because it just helps, uh, certainly this past year, it became very helpful when things were a little off the rails for a bit, and, um, I'm going to continue that.
Mr. Pratt, it does say appoint. Do you think we need a motion for this?
I, I think we could appoint.
To take your motion off the floor?
Well, what I'm, my motion is to.
Recommend to the Chair that she would do this thing?
Uh, my motion, what was my motion, Josh?
David, your motion is that any two members of the Bellas Falls Union High School Board would be able to sign on behalf of the Board and that the Board.
May I speak to my motion? And that is because without that motion, it would require a majority of members of the Board to sign, which would be six. That's a lot of bodies to get up to.
Okay, I understand then. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and seconded to have Deb and Jack be the warrant signers, and if that cannot happen, I will get two more people to do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed?
Your hand up to oppose your motion?
Molly, did we actually, um, vote on the WNESU representatives?
No, they wouldn't have been, they were appointed.
No, because really it's an appointment. We don't have to vote.
Oh, we don't have to do that for an appointment?
We just made this appointment into a motion.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Next on is set time and date and location of regular monthly meetings.
Second, is this the second Monday?
Currently, it's right now, second Monday at 6:30.
Is it only the second, not the fourth also?
And only fourth if needed, correct?
Correct.
I got a hand over here. Molly, if I may, keep in mind too, we are approaching spring slow but surely and summer schedule, as far as I know, I think we only met, like, what, once this summer, maybe twice, and if we needed more.
Yeah, we won't meet unless we have to, but we got to have it on the schedule.
No, absolutely. I just wanted to.
There's so much going on, we have to this summer.
Keep in mind. No, that's fine, just.
Okay, so we have established that the second Monday of every month at 6:30 at the Bellas Falls Union High School and the fourth Monday if needed for our meetings.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we've already moved in on this, but I know that, that fourth meeting, or that, that fourth Monday, we've used for budget and other purposes, and I would encourage you or whoever sets those, those meetings to schedule them then, simply because, uh, it's not this time, and it's also work that needs to get done every year.
Yep. We will, we'll keep that, that date available for us. Do we have to vote on that? You said in the time now. Okay. Establish the newspaper to be used to announce the school board functions and activities.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we appoint the Eagle Times as the official newspaper.
Right now, you have the Reformer and the Time.
Oh, we have both, that's right. We do go back and forth on this every year, but as Mr. Breyer's going to speak in one moment, but, uh, Eagle Times does cover a lot of Bellas Falls area, so I, I don't know. Now, is there a cost effect to having both, or I can't?
Gives you more options.
Okay. Yes, we do speak about this every year. I.
Can I just, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll make them, well, I was unaware of the both papers, so I will make the motion again, if I may, that Eagle Times and Bratton Reformer be the official paper for the use of announcements for the school board functions and activities.
David seconded.
I, with, with that slight amendment to the, uh, to the motion, I'm completely supportive of it.
Anybody else have any? All those in favor of having Eagle Times and Bratton Reformer as our newspapers to be used to announce school board functions and activities, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee assignments. Educational Effectiveness.
Who currently is on that?
Currently, right now, Stephen Major and Brenda Pockes.
Somebody's got to sign up for that one.
What is that committee?
The idea, that committee in the past has been both to focus on reviewing things like test scores and, and they're the ones that have organized presentations by departments, and it's a way of making certain that, that a school committee focuses on education, at least some part of it does, on a regular basis. And we've had it for a while. It's been a little bit inactive, but I think it's been effective when somebody's decided to take the, uh, take the bit in their teeth and run with it.
Priscilla, that kind of sounds like something that you might be really good at. Are you interested in that?
I would be willing to do that.
Okay. Can I get one more?
Molly, just real quick, I, I know in the past, we, we've gone down, um, all these before, but I know in the past too, we have said, you know, if you're interested, submit to you, and then the next meeting, there would be a list of, I mean, we can go down each one, that's totally fine.
Yeah, I think we're down around here, let's do it.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Is there anyone else interested?
Do you think Brenda would be still interested in being on it?
I hope so.
We could just appoint her. While it happens.
We're going to put Brenda on and Jack.
Oh, and Priscilla said yes.
Yep, we got Priscilla. Uh, building and grounds, I would like to be on that. That's right up my alley.
I'd like to continue on that as well, please.
Okay.
And Jack, Jack is also on it currently.
Sort of absentee for the wall, but I'm on it.
Okay.
I'd be on that.
So we have building and grounds, Molly, Colin, Jack, and Margot. Teacher negotiations.
We just skipped budget.
Oh, sorry, I'm just skip budget. Um, I will do budget. Jack, are you going to do budget?
I figure I probably will.
I'll continue on that as well, please.
Mark, were you on that last time around?
I would like to address the Chair, and I would be happy to serve on budget. I'm just counting quorum here, and that is if I'm on, that's four members, which would mean a three-person quorum. Um, if there's someone else who wants to be in, then it's easier to make that three-person quorum. Otherwise, I would prefer to be ex officio, which means you go in and you run your yap, but you don't have a vote. Don't you do that anymore? I do.
Anyone can show up to the budget.
Madam Chair, as a general rule, uh, the, my understanding has always been that all committees are, that we have vote, that basically we're appointing voting members of the committee, but in fact, uh, the, the rest of the Board is, uh, is welcome and when it comes to things like budget, rather actively encouraged to participate because budget sets more policies than almost anything but the policy committee, and it's good to know where your money's going, so it helps you, it helps explain to you why things run the way they do or sometimes don't.
I agree. So we have three right now, and anyone can join us. Teacher negotiations.
From the perspective of the current, until we reorganize SU Chair, I would strongly appreciate putting Deb back on that committee because, um, she's been carrying much, if not most, of the load for that committee the last year.
I will, uh.
Deb, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Do we need another?
Generally speaking, you have one from each board.
Perfect. Support staff.
Again.
Oh, good job, Deb.
Deb, my God.
One thing rolls into the next.
Grammy Award this year.
I thought it was him.
David is their SU representative, and he, I don't know if he's nominating himself next, uh, the next time around, but I'm ready, Jess.
Okay, CIP team.
Currently, it's Colin. It's the Continuous Improvement.
Right.
I'll continue that. That's fine.
Is the P for program?
Plan.
Plan?
Continuous Improvement Plan, yep.
Thank you.
Do we, I never hear, we never really have.
We haven't had much, really.
We don't have any updates on.
It's like, it's like once a year. That should be, that'll be coming up in the springtime.
All right. Policy Committee.
Madam Chair, we made a determination last year, maybe even the year before, that we would, we would send a representative that, since we wanted to encourage policy to be an SUI thing, that that be the process.
I would like to be the policy. I love that word.
She loves that word, okay.
Currently, David and Colin are also on it.
I'm okay with.
Do we need more than one? One for the board?
I'm okay, Molly, for you taking the lead on that.
Are there any others, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, we have some additional. We have a Transportation Committee and an Audit Committee.
Transportation and Audit Committee. I would do Transportation.
What are the functions of an Audit Committee member's responsibilities?
Well, seeing it, we just started, I think.
It's the new one, yeah.
It's a new one.
It's the new, it's the new.
So it would be to, um, work with the Superintendent to.
Audit and Business Process, right?
Mr. Fine. Audit and Procedures of the Business Office.
Well, I, I would, would like to, now, now that that's been clarified, I would like to respond to that, if I may.
Absolutely.
And that is to take note of the fact that Deb is in fact chairing what I refer to as the Audit Committee, but has a more formal name. What is that naming?
Business Systems Analysis and Audit.
Business Practices Analysis and Audit.
There's no P.
That one.
But whatever, yeah. Get something different.
And it would seem to me to be logical that, because Deb is already doing that work, that she could represent this Board, and as was pointed out during our discussion about, um, a Budget Committee, any member of the Board can certainly have participation.
Current Committee.
Deb, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We have, um, let's see, we have Jessa, Jack, right? Myself, and Priscilla.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Priscilla.
I would strongly support having Priscilla on that committee.
Yep, she says she'd like to be, so. All right. So we, Audit Committee is Deb and Priscilla, and.
And we have Jack and Jessa, so I'm assuming.
Okay. Those are from the SU.
You're of the school districts?
Yeah.
I won't call, correct, by thy name.
I think we did it all at the SU level. We never really appointed people at the school level. We're making a bit of a change in the organization of it, sort of without announcing that we're making a change in the organization of it, but that's fine.
It'll still work, yeah.
Okay, can we adopt Robert's Rules for Small Boards?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Oh, we don't need a second. But we haven't adopted it yet.
So by adopting Robert's Rules for Small Board means we do not need a second.
Right.
Correct.
Something we hang out with. Um, all those in favor of adopting Robert's Rules for Small Boards, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
She got a Netflix time or a pretty turn.
I know, it is.
I just keep, you know, I'm just streaming something here, don't worry. Review and approve Board minutes of February 19th.
I'll offer a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was not there, so I'm gonna.
We have made it to Superintendent's Report.
Okay, um, so to get started, um, I'll repass these around. These are just a packet I put together last year. They're more handy for a lot of the new Board members, so if you want one, just let me know and I'll get them to you. What they are is just, uh, it's kind of just a packet of a little bit of everything. Robert Rules of Board, rules of the school board, and also the current structure of the different offices in the SU. So if any would like one of those, I'll have them here for you. I also have a sheet going around that everyone can sign, put their name and address on, so I can, makes it easier just to compile the, uh, the Board contact sheet.
I was just going to say that Margot had brought up the fact that we all have address, email addresses through the SU.
Yep.
Right?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I put my, I put my alternate down there, but we already have them.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we all should have, uh, wnesu.com, and all official correspondence should at least be CC to that, and that's for your own legal protection, because you don't want to be in a situation where someone says there is something not in the official records and that you, we need to do an auger of your, of your hard drive. The, uh, the, I think the reason for having the both may or may not be so that if people in the SU office need to contact us, and perhaps we've only got, you know, our iPhone on to the, to our personal email, they can get through and catch us. The SU dot or, the SU dot coms are the ones that should be on a published, on the published website.
Correct. Those are the ones that are published on the site, and I always, any correspondence I send to the Board, I usually send to your SU email, unless you don't have one.
Yeah.
Just to respect the process.
I couldn't remember exactly what the WNSU structure was.
First name dot, first name.
Dot last name.
Dot last name.
I got it right.
You had it, see? There you go.
It's also, it's also a Google structure, so frankly, you could put a lot of random dots in between them all and it'll still get you.
What do you say? It's got some gaps in it there, Jack?
The only other thing, I just want to read a quick statement in regards to the Novela Coronavirus. Uh, so WNSU is keeping a close watch on the Novel Corona, and we will continue to keep the public informed as things continue to develop. WNSU is and will. WNSU is and will continue to follow all recommendations and guidance from the state and the CDC. At this point, Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union has no reported cases of the virus and is being as proactive as possible to make sure that all recommendations and guidance from the state and the CDC is being followed. I put daily updates and resources on the WNSU's website and Facebook page and will continue to do so. Last week, all students were sent home with an information and steps that the schools will put in place if needed. Anyone at home, if you have not received that information, please contact your student's school.
Thank you.
Yes. There were.
Madam Chair, one of the things that, I, I've been involved recently with some material having to do with both Vermont State Department of Health on some of this issue, and I would just urge all parties that are responsible for it that the biggest thing we can do is, is clean surfaces, doorknobs, and, and desktops like this are a real thing. Also, large community events, this might be a small one, but the rule still applies that they should be cleaned before people come to a show or if they, and, and come to a meeting. And I know that's, that it's an extra step, but particularly with people that are older and perhaps more vulnerable, and I'll speak for myself on this one, it's, it's really important, you know? I had to argue with my doctor about attending any more meetings this week. And so I'm, I'm being, I'm, I'm just kind of asking for me and for everybody else that's over 65 with bad lungs, we really got to pay attention to this stuff.
Yeah, the, the schools and the SU office are all, taking all precautions that is needed to keep, you know, disinfecting the buildings and also the buses. So the, although administration, myself and the school nurses are meeting tomorrow to discuss further about different procedures or protocols that we may or may not have to put in place, especially around if the state decides to, you know, close down the schools for any period of time. We want to make sure that we have an education plan in place for, for students and families. So we'll be meeting on that tomorrow.
Like I said, just asking for indulgence in the hard surfaces thing, because, you know, it's like when we, when we've had really bad flu epidemics run through here, a lot of that is preventable if we can keep the tabletops, desktops, and doorknobs clean. You'd be amazed the difference makes.
And washing of hands is extremely important, too.
That as well. But you know, if you clean hands, you set them on a crappy table, you're back where you are.
I can't speak for the principal, but I'm sure he's.
And somebody from Claremont was exposed, and now the children in the Claremont school are all being watched because she has been asked to stay home for two weeks. So it is getting closer.
Well, the, the, one of those people works for, works for the hospital, who should have known better and showed up at a major function, a tuck function, and basically took tuck, tuck school offline for two weeks. So that's kind of stuff we want to avoid.
Any other?
And no more Corona beer.
That's not true, I had one Saturday.
Hard to say derially around here.
Any other questions or comments?
We each fight.
TV's picking up second as we're going on.
It's even funny the second time, okay. Mr. Pratt, is that all?
That is it for now. The rest of my report is online for the public or anyone else who wants to review it.
We are ready for principal's report.
So, because we have the viewing audience, I'm going to read through my report, and my first topic is this current topic, so I'll give it to you from the building perspective. As the world addresses the issues associated with COVID-19, we are also being attentive to the potential impacts of the spread of this disease on our school. A couple of concrete steps and actions that we have taken include, one, conducting a detailed assessment of our abilities to keep the learning moving forward from a distance if the school is closed for an extended period of time, and two, increasing the frequency and thoroughness of our cleaning and disinfecting of areas and surfaces that are high-traffic areas for potential spreading of diseases. With regard to bullet point number one above, I surveyed the staff last week with some specific questions related to each teacher's ability to deliver the goods without being in the same building as their students. I then shared those results of that survey with the staff and directed each teacher to make concrete plans for this possibility. With regard to point number two, I have met with Jim DeBel and the custodial staff members who are responsible for cleaning the building to develop a plan to cover the most important surfaces multiple times each day with disinfectant cleaners. In all matters related to COVID-19, especially when decisions need to be made or actions need to be taken, I consult with our school nurse, the Vermont Department of Health, the central office, and the CDC before deciding on a course of action. It's all the news to fit to print on COVID-19 here at the building. And as Mr. Pratt said, there's information on the district's website if you're looking for that. Number two, update on the driveway parking lot replacement project. As many of you already know, this past town meeting day did not result in a conclusion of yes or no on the topic of the $1 million bond for the work to be done on the driveway and parking areas around the school. That is because this article, article did not make it onto the ballot in Rockingham, and that was due to an error in the Rockingham town offices, not due to a mistake, any mistake on the part of the WNESU offices. That's the bad news. The good news is that the article did appear on the ballots of the other three towns in the district. Better yet, in, in just the results from voting in Westminster and Grafton, because I haven't seen the results from Athens, the article.
Overwhelming.
I'm, I'm sure. This article passed candidly by over 500 votes. It appears that the voters are in favor of this project, so I'm very optimistic that come mid-May, which is when this article will be considered by Rockingham, we will have the borrowing authority that we are seeking. After that, the next steps are, one, apply for and obtain the $1 million bond; two, go out to bid for the engineering work for the project; three, work with the designed, the designated engineering firm to create bid specs and documents for the project; four, put the project out to bid; and five, award the bid to the contractor. Because it is unlikely that we can take any of these steps until the vote in Rockingham, although I will say we can move forward a little bit if we choose to, but not in a way that's going to necessarily significantly improve the timetable, it is now highly unlikely that this project will happen this summer. Work will most likely need to happen in the summer of 2021. Should this fluid process change, I will keep you all in the loop. Any questions on any of that?
Are there, what steps can you take prior to having that?
Well, we talked about that a little bit, well, I've talked about it with our office staff and here just before we started, but technically, we could probably go out to bid on the engineering part of this. And so therefore, we could have bids for that work in hand on the day that we feel like we can spend money on this. So clearly, we can't go to get a contract for an engineering firm if we don't know that we've got the money. So the day after Rockingham votes, if we choose to, we could then award that. But even then, that's mid-May, they're going to have to do enough work to put together bid specs and documents, which then puts the contract out, the, the work out to bid, and that goes out to bid on that timetable super-optimistically, like beginning of June. And then we have to award that bid, but at that point, it is highly unlikely we would be able to pin down contractors for work that's going to start a week after that, so.
My, my thinking is simply that we're, we've made, the only good thing that we're getting out of this, this emerging epidemic is interest rates that are hitting zero.
And that doesn't, so I would say as soon as we get the borrowing authority, we can act on that.
You can still borrow, you just can't spend it till we.
Exactly, that's exactly it. So that we can do, but we still can't do that until we get the authority to borrow. And the upside, if we're looking at the glass half-full on this, is the timing now makes it possible for us to go out to bid for the actual project itself, January, February, when ideally, multiple contractors will still be available for the summer, and therefore we got a more competitive bid process, so.
Colin, do you have your hand up?
I do. Is there, have you discussed this or thought about this, not knowing that, you know, it wasn't on the ballot, but is there an alternative, not alternative, but is there, well, yes, that is the word I was looking for, for just, you know, patching it, making it, you know, I mean, I know we've done several patches before, but.
What will happen is the holes are going to get filled in to cover us for the next year, just like we've done in the past. So we'll get hot patches done. We are looking at the possibility of, through budgeted money, doing some work on the water that flows down from the back driveway of Hadley Field, which is what typically pools down here, and then the, you know, this time of year, repeated driving over is what causes all those holes to happen. So, so we're going to look at maybe taking on small parts of this with monies that are available and do some of that.
Okay.
Number three, winter sports season. This year was one of the most successful winter sports seasons that we've had in many years. Both basketball teams were seeded high enough in the Division III state tournament to have home playoff games. Both teams won their first playoff games, and both teams lost in the second round of the playoffs. And into our track, we had two individual state champions. One was Jonathan Cameron on the shot put, and the second one was Abby Brodley in the 3,000-meter race. And so we're very proud of those two individuals. Additionally, this winter, we had two seniors reach the 1,000-point mark in basketball, Taylor Videl for the girls and Ryan Kelly for the boys, which again, is one of those huge marks to reach in a high school basketball career. Overall, a great winter sports season. Congratulations to all of our winter sport athletes. And then finally, Mamma Mia. The Bellas Falls Union High School Drama Club proudly presents its spring musical, Mamma Mia, the staged version of the popular movie by the same name. The show is based upon the music of the band ABBA, and as I look around here, all of you people had an eight-track or cassette tape of ABBA at some point.
I'm all about an eight-track, there, Mr. Hunt stand by.
Or, I put an or out there.
What's that?
So, everyone's going to want to come out for that, to hear your favorite ABBA songs. The showtimes are Friday, March 13th at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, March 14th. Matinee at 2:00, evening show at 7:00. Come on, come all. As always, it will be awesome. That's all I got.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any committee reports. Correct, Mr. Pratt?
I think that's pretty accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark, would you like to do a WNESU board meeting review?
Well, we've had so many WNESU board meetings. It is difficult to pick one particular highlight. I, I guess what I would say is that the WNESU board has decided that we need outside help in order to understand some of the issues that affected payroll beginning in the fall, and apparently continued possibly even into this early part of January. In that regard, the WNESU ultimately decided last Wednesday to hire the law firm that we have on retainer to advise schools within the district. That's Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitsky. We asked them to come in and conduct interviews in the office and see if we can understand what caused the failures which occurred, so that we can take steps to make sure they don't happen again. I want to also say that Superintendent Pratt has been very proactive in terms of meeting the urgent and day-to-day needs of activity in the business office. He has conducted a reorganization, which we discussed at the last meeting. I, it's, I have to say, that Chris could explain it to you, and I can't, I will simply note the fact that RHR Smith, who are the auditors, also has a consulting division, and a couple of RHR Smith consultants have been assisting with some of the ongoing operations in the business office. And I will state, it's simply my opinion, that the payroll issues that were plaguing us for a number of months, I actually believe those are in the rearview mirror. And the larger question really going forward will be, I believe, around the security of our technology infrastructure. And once again, some very concrete steps have been taken to begin to address that. So we've had some hard knocks, we're back on our feet, and as always in the WNESU, continue to be punching above our weight.
Thank you.
This is my report.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? No appointments? Director's comments?
Deb? Wash your hands.
Margot?
I'll echo that.
Steven?
Can I ask that young man a question?
Absolutely. Is it going to be nice?
I'm always nice.
Okay.
Don't believe it, just ask me. When is all of these investigations going to start?
I don't know if there's a start date. Steve, do you know, Chris?
I'll be reaching out to the lawyers tomorrow to set up times, to see when they can come in and start interviewing.
And, and what is, what is it going to end in? A report as to who is responsible?
It will end in a report. If there's individual responsibility, I would anticipate that the boards would have that explained to them. But one of the reasons that we have investigators coming in from Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitsky, or LynnLaw.com for short, is because we really, at this point in time, don't have a complete understanding of the dynamic, and we're hopeful that that will help us get there.
Do you, do you find that because we don't really have an understanding of the dynamics, and because we're trying to investigate the question of who may be responsible, does that undercut in any way the firing of Rhonda?
Well, I, I am not in a position to make a direct connection between the current investigation and Rhonda's firing. And what I would like to point out is that we are aware, based on the business consultant, Marilyn Frederick, who came in and had a look at business office systems, we are aware that we are missing nine years' worth of payroll data. And the question arises, is the nine years of payroll data still in our system and we can't access it? We have to bear in mind the fact that we have had no end of problems with a low-bid statewide education accounting system, which is now on its 15th revision in 18 months, which is certainly, doesn't augur well for it. And there, you know, it, it could be some individual responsibility on the part of members of our staff, past or current. It could be issues with payroll. It could be issues with the fact that we don't have a full grasp of how to apply our technology. It could be a combination of all three of the above. We simply don't know, but we feel it's incumbent on us to have the answers, because ultimately, we're responsible to our constituents, the voters and the taxpayers, to make sure that this district runs efficiently, and we can account for how we spend the money.
Well, my comment is that it seems to me that everything you're saying undercuts completely the fact that all of the blame here was put on Rhonda. And now all of a sudden, we're finding that, hey, maybe there's some other problems here, and let's do an investigation. And maybe that investigation, David, ought to have been done before Rhonda got so ignominiously discharged from her position. That's my comment.
Mr. Pratt?
Three points. First one is that in numerous public sessions of the Supervise Reunion Board and meetings, including the big public ones we had out in the auditorium, we did speak to the fact that the problems that we were dealing with were, as problems always are, multipoint. There were some staffing questions. There was clearly known way back a, a problem with the, with the e-finance accounting software. We discussed it in an open session here. We discussed it in an open session here, and an open session, uh, at the, uh, at both the SU meetings and at, at our smashed-together district meetings repeatedly. Uh, so this, the, there's no such thing as one error, they will say, in, uh, quality control, and this is a case where we think that's the case here. It's point one. Point two, um, the, some of the heroic work that's been done to pull this together has been done by our superintendent, who's been more or less living up in the accounting office in the last little while, and is really probably, uh, is rapidly becoming more hands-on with our, uh, with their business processes than the average business manager, and I think he ought to be recognized for that. He's been putting in kind of ridiculous hours in the last, uh, several months trying to put this together, and I think we should, uh, recognize that and compliment the fact that he's doing all that. And the third is, hey Brenda, when you coming back? We missed, this whole board misses you.
You said two.
I said three.
He said three.
Okay, um, I always appreciate Steve Fine asking the hard questions, because it certainly helps me, um, understand him just a little bit better.
Colin?
Uh, it's a new year for this, uh, board, because tonight, um, you know, as we reorganized our board again for, uh, 2020, so I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I think we, for the most part, do the best we can for the school and for the community, and I look forward to working with you. And, uh, congratulations to Winter Sports as well. It's a great year for, uh, the sports program here at Bellas Falls.
Thank you. I believe that we need a motion to go into executive session to, uh, discuss a business personnel matter. Is that correct?
Yes. I will move that motion.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, Priscilla.
Priscilla.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna turn you back up.
We forgot.
Priscilla, your comments.
Uh, I wanted to say that I think the restructuring of the business office, we are making some progress forward, and, um, we will, it will help us to know more about, um, the problems with the business office. So I think we need to appreciate that, um, Mr. Pratt has gone ahead with doing some of that and is getting to the bottom of, of it. And it will definitely give us more insight than what we've got. And I want to thank you for letting me participate this way. I appreciate it.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Yes, Deb?
Point of order. I did this at another previous meeting where Mr. Fine was on phone, and everyone had to say their names. Technically, according to the statute, you must say your name when making a motion. Well, not when making a motion per se, but as in voting on the motion, everyone, and we should have done that the entire meeting. I apologize for missing that, although I'm sure you appreciate it. But we should do it with this one.
Okay, so--
I moved the motion that we go into an executive session, so I, Colin, James.
So, all those in favor of going into executive session to discuss a business personnel matter. David Clark?
David Clark, aye.
Colin James, aye.
Deborah Wright, aye.
Margot Kia, aye.
Are we inviting the administration?
Are we?
Or is this without them?
Yes, we are inviting the administration. Mr. Fine, are you voting yes?
Mr. Fine says fine.
Jack Pryor says fine too, just in solidarity.
Molly Vanek says aye. We are going into executive session.
Priscilla.
Priscilla.
Oh, Priscilla.
Thank you.
So are you a yes or a fine?
All right, we're going, Priscilla. Hold on.